I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Tuesday, September 7th. Order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell has been excused, Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Will you now please rise with me in honor of our men, in a moment of silence, in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute?
By the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is proclamations and presentations. I think we have youth council folks outside. So we'll skip over that. Skip over the proclamations, presentations, since Chief Sharp is here. Youth council report, youth council folks are outside till they get in here. So we'll move to Clover Park School District report from Board Member Carol Jacobs, who will appear virtually.
Mayor Anderson, I don't see that Board Member Jacobs has joined the meeting yet.
Okay. And we'll move to public comments, just when any member of the public may speak to any item of business, whether or not it has, is on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak, yellow light comes on at 30 seconds, the red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city, such as Linda Farmer, Lakewood, Washington. I haven't received a sign up sheet. First person who signed up is Ninks Knott. Ma'am? Are you here to exploit your children? They're not competent to testify. Using them as props? You come here to disrupt the meeting, you can leave. Out. What? No. She's not competent to testify. She's up there as a prop or method to exploit. No one else has signed up, no adults have signed up for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that there are some folks who came in and signed in on the second sheet.
We now move back to the youth council report. Who's giving the youth council report?
Hi, good evening. So my name is Hank. I will be giving the youth council report this evening, but first I'd like to allow my other youth council members to introduce themselves. Does everyone want to come on up here?
Hi, everyone. My name is Josephine Kaiser.
You're going to have to get a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
Alrighty. Hi, my name is Josephine Kaiser. I go to Harrison Prep. I'm currently a senior there, and I've been a part of council, a part of youth council. This will be my third year, and I just want to say how honored I am to be able to continue being able to put my voice and thoughts out here, and I appreciate your willing ears to listen to them. So thank you.
It's closed.
Hi, my name is Brandon Elliott. I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Brandon Elliott, and I'm a junior at Harrison Prep. I've been a part of youth council since last year, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to support our community.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Branna Norris. I'm also a junior at Harrison Prep, and this is my first year in youth council.
Hi, my name is Mayumi Romidius, and I'm a junior at Harrison Prep, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to be part of youth council.
Hello, my name is Violet Johnson, and I'm a freshman at Harrison Prep.
All right, and I forgot to mention, I also go to Harrison Prep, and this will be my third year on youth council. I'm excited to start. So today we had our first meeting, and we did a lot of introductions, a lot of icebreakers. I feel that I've really connected with all of my fellow members, returning members and first years. Something we noticed, and something you've probably noticed, is that a lot of our members are from Harrison Prep. Not all of them, but most. And so something that we've been focused on right off the bat is how we can start to recruit people from other schools as well, just so we can have a more diverse range of voices in future meetings. Besides that, we've done a lot of brainstorming, how we can address the needs of the youth of this city. We did an icebreaker activity where we went to four different posters that our coordinator, Brian, put up in the hallways. We wrote under the prompts, what do Lakewood youth want, what do Lakewood youth need, what obstacles are in the way, and what do we not know about Lakewood youth, and what they might want or need. And so, yeah, these first few meetings were just getting the creative juices flowing and thinking about how we can best adequately address those needs. We also began talking about what advisory board assignments we're interested in, and we're planning on finalizing those assignments in the next meeting. So do you have any questions for us?
Questions for the youth council, Mr. Whelan?
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Do you have a sense on some of the issues discussed that are of interest for the next year? Some of the issues of concern or issues to address by the youth council?
Sure. So one thing that Brian noticed right off the bat also was something that we expressed in that activity is that there's kind of a lack of communication, and that's, oh, I'm sorry, there's kind of a lack of communication between, you know, members and the schools, and maybe between members, members of the youth council and members of the community, and how we can kind of amplify our voices and try to get our message out there more. Something we've been thinking about doing this year, and something we've been mulling over, is whether or not we want to try to host our youth summit again.
Right.
And as you know, we've tried to do that in the past, and COVID-19 has prevented it from happening. And so that's one thing that we're trying to do to kind of revitalize youth council this year and really be more active in the community.
One thing that would be interesting from my perspective to perhaps have you folks think about this year is we received some public comment over the last few months about the need in the community for a community youth center and/or certain better and more dynamic youth programming. So if that's something that you can noodle over as part of your work assignment this year between and among yourselves, that would be of great help to us. Come back with some potential recommendations.
Definitely. We'll take note of that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This summer, the city funded a program called Warriors of Change. It was held at the Clover Park High School. And the young people, youth who participated, there were seven groups, and they each devised a proposal of things that could move forward, primarily fueled by the energy of young people to do that, that now that the school has started and that program is over, but if they are going to continue, I think that some of those programs envisioned fall in the realm of what the deputy mayor was suggesting, but they all were youth-generated ideas of how to make the community better, and all but one were community-focused, not just internally focused on the Clover Park High School. So if you could look at checking in on those projects, and also looking at whether those projects need some assistance to be able to effectively move forward, that would also be helpful to us.
Right. I think the, I think it's the Warriors of Change, was that what it was called? I think that was something that we touched on in the meeting. We also, again, touched on the youth summit and Give Six, and maybe other potential initiatives that we can look into for this year. So I'll definitely have to update you on that, but thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. We look forward to your, good year for you.
Thank you.
And gentlemen, you can have a seat. There's plenty of seats. We now go back to proclamations and presentations. We have Chief Sharp here. We're in recess. We're going to clear the place. We're in recess for 10 minutes. You can, you can, you can sit and watch. It's an open public, it's an open public meeting. You can't come here and disrupt it. No. You can, you can sit down, not disrupt the meeting, and continue to be here, or you can leave. Yes. Tell us, tell us what your dad thinks. All right, we're in recess. 15, 10 minutes.
He's the one that's empowered. He's the one that has power, you know, he should not be the one yelling at us. Say things that, ooh, you're the mayor, and you're telling me that I'm exploiting children because they have a voice. They have a right to speak, and that's not okay.
Would council please return to the dais?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might, I had inadvertently not sufficiently pointed out to you that, because it's unusual, we have at least seven on the Zoom line that have been waiting for an opportunity to be called on. And so I just wasn't sure whether you were fully aware that there was, in addition to here, we have some on the Zoom. And we have a couple items of business, obviously, but I wanted to let you know that.
Do business first and come back to people online. So we moved to proclamations and presentations, or back to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation declaring September 11th, we'll do this one, September 11th, 2021, as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance. For this, we have Chief Jim Sharp of West Pierce Fire and Rescue.
My glasses don't fog up. I'll be glad to read this proclamation. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent lives of men, women, and children who've been going about their normal routines were taken from us, depriving our families and loved ones a lifetime of precious moments. And whereas, in the years that followed, our capacity to love and to hope has guided us forward as we worked to rebuild our nation more sound and resilient than ever before, and stood strong as one people determined to further embolden our country's character with acts of endurance, strength, renewal, and progress. And whereas, the pain inflicted on our nation on September 11th was felt by people of every race, background, and faith, though many young Americans have grown up without knowing firsthand the horrors of that day, their lives have been shaped by it. And whereas, the compassion that rose in the hearts and minds of the American people on September 11th still serves as the ultimate rebuke to the evil of those who attacked us. And whereas, first responders who risked and gave their lives to rescue others demonstrated the unwavering heroism that defines our great nation. And whereas, on Friday, September 10th, 2021, at 12:30 PM, a remembrance ceremony will be held at the Lakewood City Hall to reflect on the 20th anniversary of the attacks, the lives we lost, and pay tribute to the families who still live with extraordinary pain. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council hereby proclaim September 11th, 2021, as Patriot Day and a Day of Remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. We urge all residents to observe a moment of silence to honor the innocent victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001, and to observe this day with remembrance in honor of those individuals and their families. Proclaim the 7th day of September, 2021. Don Anderson, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Sharp. The floor is yours. Mayor Anderson and Deputy Mayor Whelan, members of the council, I do appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to acknowledge September 11th. I speak, you know, for myself and also for Chief Zar, who couldn't be here this evening. There was a lot of first responders lost that day. There were a lot of civilians lost that day. There were a lot of military personnel, almost 3,000 people, as the deputy mayor stated. And while it was 20 years ago, their families went on, and there's many, many children who were born without ever meeting their parents because of that day. They grew up without parents. There's family members who won't see loved ones again. There are first responders who responded to the incident that suffered terrible, terrible medical tragedies from that that they still carry with them today. So although it's been 20 years, there is a lot of people that still suffer and grieve as if it was yesterday. So to take the time and acknowledge the service of the responders, to acknowledge the lives lost and recognize that day here this evening, as well as Friday, is greatly appreciated on behalf of myself and again also Chief Zar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank your department for all it does to keep that memory alive. Now, now we move to the Clover Park School District report, and for this, we have Board Member Carol Jacobs.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really am missing not being there in person with you, but we hope that soon we will be able to. It is September. Of course, that's really the busiest time of the year for us, and we kicked off our school year on Wednesday, September 1st, with full-time in-person learning for all students at their home campuses. The school district does have a COVID-19 safety and mitigation plan in process, in place, and the district, for the first, we are providing virtual learning options for families. The Pearson's Education Group from K grades K through 5, and the Graduation Alliance grades 6 through 12. And this is going to be an ongoing online school process. This is not just a COVID thing, because we, if children are looking for homeschooling and online learning, we want them to learn here in Clover Park School. So that's going to be a constant thing. Our kindergartners actually started school today. Last year, last week, Monday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, all the teachers actually held family connection conferences with each kindergarten family to find out, tell me about your child.
One thing that we know is really important, and I know that we have a really good partnership with the city and the police, is that school's now in session, which means we have thousands of children walking to and from bus stops in the morning and the afternoon. School safety and speed zones are in effect, so please take it slow, keep an eye out for our kids, and pay extra attention to the flashlights. And we have more schools this year than ever before with flashing lights, so nobody can say they didn't know. It's just my personal little editorial there. So we have to just be careful. A lot of, lot of families variance into different schools, and so we have to make sure that students are safe and by not blocking parking lots and school entrances. Beginning September 22nd, the district will implement the one-hour late starts on most Wednesday mornings. During this common time, certified staff across the district will meet in grade level or department teams. They will be reviewing and analyzing student data, revising teaching strategies and practices, and collaborate to improve student achievement, and plan for additional time and support for students who need it, and enrichment for students who are already performing at grade level. And quite frankly, we do the one-hour on Wednesday instead of, as in the past, there have been professional developments and it's been a closed day, which means, or half-day, which means for many of our kids, they don't have somebody at home, or they don't have the ability to get home, or they're, or have daycare facilities. So starting the one hour late is the, is the least disruptive to our families and to the education process. We have, I don't have the newest schedule, but our secondary schools will be starting their fall sports. Last week's game against, with Lakes' game last week was canceled due to some COVID issues on the opposing team. It wasn't ours, it was the opposing team. So we will be following both Lakes and Clover Park football, soccer, and all the other fall sports. Please read, when you're driving by the schools, if you can take a look at the calendars. I, I've said it before, I love, I love high school. You know, I love the high school events, but we'll just have to kind of wait and see what COVID does in keeping them open and going. That's kind of what we have for right now. Is there any questions that you have for me?
Any questions from Ms. Jacobs? Mr. Whalen?
Director Jacobs, it's fabulous to see you in person. It's been a while.
I wish I was there.
Just a quick question, probably too early to tell, but do we have a sense on whether enrollment is higher or lower than 2020?
You know what? I really appreciate the caveat of it's too early to tell. Oftentimes, what happens is, starting before Labor Day, we kind of get all the preschool jitters and wiggles out. A lot of people don't send their kids until the first day. Not a lot, but enrollment goes up after, after the Tuesday, the traditional Tuesday after Labor Day. So I do not have that count.
Got it. Okay.
We did have, I would like to say another thing. We did have a very successful summer school program. We did phases where the children did more than just retrieve credits. So we did have an extremely successful summer school program, too. I don't have the facts on it. I was just sent out Friday. So we're proud of that opportunity. They did a theater group. They did science groups. They did some pretty exciting stuff district-wide.
That's a great point. And I was going to ask you a follow-up question on that. We've heard from public comment the need for more youth activities in the summer. Arguably, they would be youth from the school district, or perhaps enrolled in the district. What activities did you find were most successfully attended this last summer? And what hopes might you have for better programming and participation next year?
I'm going to tell you, that's a wonderful question that I will share with Superintendent Banner. In the past, summer school was credit retrieval. It was really, and it was for those kids who fell under the lap, the Learning Assistance Program. And so federal money was coming in to assist them to, to grow in their enrichment and to their academics. This year, it was open to all students. So we had kids everywhere having the opportunity. I'm not 100% sure where the greatest success was, where there was that on the school, on JBLM. It was at secondary. I don't have that information, but I certainly will ask Superintendent Banner to give us some of that.
Very good. Thanks.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and
Thank you.
Wish you well on a successful year.
Well, we're headed for one. Just as a slight reminder, next Monday, we will be having our board meeting and taking our very important vote on our equity policy that we've worked very hard with, as I know you have yours. So we're excited to move forward with that also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. So now I'm going to move back to public comment. There were people waiting online. If you're online, we'll go to you first. You can either dial 868-7263-2373, or go to zoom.us and enter that as a meeting ID number, which is on the screen, 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other identifier. Use the raise hand function to indicate that you want to speak. You will have three minutes. There is a timer that should show on the screen if everything's working correctly. Ms. Schumacher, who's first up? Julian Wheeler?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, Julian Wheeler, Lakewood resident. I come before you as a volunteer who chairs the Pierce County Accessible Community Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to let you and also to let the public know that our next regular session meeting is going to be on Tuesday, next Tuesday, September 14. It's going to be on Zoom, 9:00 to 11:00. And keeping these on Zoom and having a city council here maintain a, an option for remote attendance helps to maintain accessibility for more people. We are looking for new members, new ideas. And the, the idea of funding, we actually helped expedite funding for accessibility projects in Pierce County. And I say this around budget season, if that is coming up. If a, if a project doesn't make the final cut, and it's, can be characterized as a, an accessibility project, feel free to come to our, you know, one of our regular session meetings. We could send you the intake paperwork, and then consider it. Not guaranteeing the outcome of our vote, or even that of the state-level Accessibility Community Subcommittee. But I do look forward to, you know, helping make Lakewood, which is so accessible already, but more accessible. And I appreciate the work that the, the council and the mayor and the deputy mayor have done. And so I look forward to, you know, a wonderful occasion this coming Friday. Yesterday was Labor Day. This coming Saturday is 9/11. Next Friday is the 17th Constitution Day. A lot of good occasions to reflect on how we can work for civic betterment. And I'll make, I'll make this quick. On Wednesday, October 6, at Pierce County Elections, at 10:00 AM or 2:00 PM, there will be a training for volunteer election observers. This is not related to the Art Committee, but it is something that I want to encourage people to consider turning out for. And I'd look forward to seeing people take part in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clicks, is the timer working online?
Mayor Anderson, the timer is not working online. We're using the timer on the dais.
So would you give a 30-second warning to?
Right. I couldn't see a timer, so I just wanted to point it out.
Oh, you're fine, Julian. Thank you. Next person who's online to speak is Christina Minetti.
Ms. Minetti, you're unmuted. Oh, good. Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Oh, no. Okay. Well, can you hear me better now, maybe?
That's better.
Oh, good. Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Minetti. I live in Lakewood. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I was shocked to hear about the, the latest shooting on Saturday. And I hear that there are various conflicting reports about what happened. So I hope that that gets a thorough investigation. Another thing I wanted to mention is, just briefly, that during the Planning Commission last week, I heard rather shocking news that there, there's a proposal to build a 90-foot tall apartment complex on the old QFC property there in Colonial Center. I think this is obviously not a good idea, and I've outlined elsewhere why. One of them is that we just don't have the infrastructure. What about the emergency services? What about the fact that such a tall building, you know, the fire department probably doesn't have equipment for such tall buildings in Lakewood? The, the highway, the roads, I mean, I don't know, with hundreds of apartment buildings and potentially 1,000 people or whatever, I just don't think it's a good idea. And lastly, I was, I was stunned by what happened at the beginning of this meeting. We were here waiting. Mrs. Wagner is here with me and my son also. And we, we were very shocked. I was thinking, like, what is going on? I mean, the children, even if something happened with the grandparent of the children, to do something like that, I'm a, I'm a historian by profession, and this is something, you know, punishing the sins of the children, punishing the children for the sins of the parents is something that goes on in Stalinist Russia or in North Korea. The children didn't do anything wrong. And so I don't think that the children and the rest of us should have been punished for whatever was going on before. So I thank you for letting us speak. And that's all I wanted to say for now. I appreciate it.
Ms. Minetti?
Yes. Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can still hear you.
Okay. I've, I've lost everything on the screen, so I don't know what's happening. But thank you for letting me speak. And I, I hope you'll take into consideration, consideration the things that I've mentioned.
Next to speak is Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen?
Mr. Haugen, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just a correction here. I think that the civics corps should have taught the Jacobs that our constitution offers the equal opportunity to succeed. Equity has a completely different meaning, and I think I've said what that means before, but evidently needs some attention. This is just a bit of news. The subject of whether or not the election was fraudulent. Well, it may not be proven yet, but there is enough suspicion to start a discovery process. And I think that started in the cyber symposium that was held about three weeks ago, because it's also brought on a lawsuit. And what lawsuits do is they provide a discovery process where people can be put under oath. Because on an issue like that, you're going to hear nothing but lying. So it's good to have a, something going on in court where you can get people on the stand and get them, get them at least sworn to tell the truth. So that's a good piece of, that's a good piece of information that started. It's really, you can't help but say that we've had some really incompetent leadership in the last eight months. Now the border is wide open. Afghanistan was left too quickly, which now we have hostages, American citizens in Afghanistan. And we're trying to deal with a terrorist organization. So, you know, hopefully, we can dig our way out of this. But it sure is a mess, especially four days before celebrating, or not celebrating, but recognizing 9/11. We're right back to where we were before 9/11. We have open borders. So what good did all that money do that we spent on ports, airports, securing it, when all terrorists have to do is just go to the, to the, to the cartel? They deliver everything, not only drugs. They can deliver everything the terrorists want. Anyway, Zenim.
That's your time, Mr. Haugen. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
You're going to get a chance to speak if you aren't unruly and disrupt the meeting. And don't disrupt the meeting. No, we're going to have the quorum. Your ideas will be listened to, but your conduct, if disruptive, will not be tolerated. Next up is only identified as Sam.
Sam, if you can please unmute your microphone and provide comments. Sam, we show that you've raised your hand to speak this evening. Your microphone is muted. We'll move on to the next person. If you'd still like to speak, please re-raise your hand.
The next person with hand up is Marshall Meyer. And what lawsuits do is they provide a discovery process where people can be put under oath. Because on an issue like that, you're gonna hear nothing but lying. So it's good to have a, something going on in court where you can get people on the stand and get them uh, get them uh, at least sworn to tell the truth. So that's a good piece of uh, that's a good piece of information that started. It's really, you can't help but say that we've had some really incompetent leadership in the last eight months. Now the border is wide open. Afghanistan was left too quickly, which now we have hostages, American citizens in Afghanistan. And we're trying to deal with a terrorist organization. So, you know, hopefully we can dig our way out of this. But it sure is a mess, especially four days before celebrating, uh, we're not celebrating, but recognizing nine eleven. We're right back to where we were before nine eleven. We have open borders. So what good did all that money do that we spent on ports, airports, securing it when all terrorists have to do is just go to the, to the, to the cartel? They deliver everything, not only drugs. They can deliver everything the terrorists want. Anyway, Zenim.
That's your time, Mr. Haugen. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
You're gonna get a chance to speak if you aren't unruly and disrupt the meeting, and don't disrupt the meeting. No. We're gonna have decorum. Your ideas will be listened to, but your conduct, if disruptive, will not be tolerated. Next up is only identified as Sam.
Sam, if you can please unmute your microphone and provide comments. Sam, we show that you've raised your hand to speak this evening. Your microphone is muted. We'll move on to the next person. If you'd still like to speak, please re-raise your hand.
Uh, the next person with hand up is Marshall Meyer.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, council members, for um, taking the time and allowing me the time to talk to you this evening. Uh, I am the engineering manager at the Lakewood Water District. And I was uh, just going to talk briefly about the um, one of the business items this evening of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city has uh, received. And I just wanted to uh, thank you for the time and effort that the staff has extended to soliciting public input, and I know that there's been quite a bit of effort there to have that outreach, so I, I just appreciate uh, your time and your staff's time in doing that. And wanted to uh, touch base just on a couple of the projects that we have uh, put forward for consideration. And one of them, I believe, is in your packet for the construction of a new groundwater well that will serve the Springbrook uh, community as well as the uh, the broader city. Um, and I think that's certainly a, a great project and a great investment in the infrastructure of the city and uh, the residents. But I also wanted to talk about another uh, well project that we have been contemplating and doing some pre-planning work with the hospital uh, over the last five years or so to construct a well there that would also serve the Springbrook community, but again, larger, broader area in addition to providing um, an emergency water source to the hospital if there were a, a natural disaster and um, we feel like that is a, uh, would be a great investment as well in public safety and health and community, um, and just uh, would ask that if you do proceed uh, and select that project to, uh, to partner with us, we would uh, we would, of course, welcome that and uh, look forward to that partnership and again, feel like that would provide uh, a tremendous benefit. Um, not only to the Springbrook community, but city and the hospital as well. And so I just again, thank you for your time and uh, yeah, thanks for the time this evening.
Thank you. Next person who signed up is Jenna Lee.
Hello?
We can hear you, Ms. Lee.
Um, hello, my name is Jenna Lee. I am a resident of Seattle. Uh, I firstly wanted to say that I don't think it's reasonable to prevent children from speaking. Um, and I don't think it's reasonable to assume that they're only parroting the opinion of their parents. We know that um, hey, the uh, the nine-year-old boy who wanted to speak, he wrote his speech all on his own. So there's, there's no reason to say that children are incapable of having a voice when they're just as much as citizens and residents of the city, and they're just as much, if not more, impacted by the decisions that the city makes, especially on environmental issues that's gonna have long-lasting consequences uh, with climate change and also just quality of life in the neighborhood that they're going to grow up in. So I, I wanted to make, make that point because it was frankly quite shocking to me that uh, Mr. Mayor Don Anderson, that you would laugh at Ms. Melissa's face and, and said that she's using her kids as puppets when that's not happening. The kids wanted to speak. They're not being forced. And again, they're, they're perfectly capable of having rational thought and having opinions that are valid to listen to. Um, I'm, I'm nineteen years old. I've, I'm, it's not that long ago that I've been a minor. And I certainly had opinions that I think were worth listening to, and in fact, I think when I was a, a minor, I had a unique perspective that, that adults didn't have because I, I knew that I'd be stuck with these things along, for, for more time. I, I also wanted to say that um, I wanted to oppose the, the construction of a um, huge apartment complex in the Colonial Center's old QFC building. Uh, with, I mean, with hundreds of units and space for hundreds of cars, that building would completely overshadow the rest of the neighborhood and, because there's no other buildings of that scale. So the, it, it would just be oppressive, not to mention the Gary Oak deaths that would be necessary for this development to proceed. So I think the city council has a moral imperative to reject such destructive quote-unquote development efforts. I, I also think that Lakewood should stop having allowances of cutting two trees per year on smaller lots and four trees uh, for lots over thirty thousand square feet. And it's, it's completely just a racist and classist injustice that so many of our oaks are being cut down in lower income and racial and ethnic minority neighborhoods. And I also want to point, point out to the council that these children are, are children of color. And what I've noticed, the trend is that when people of color are speaking, and, and I'm a person of color myself, I'm Asian. When we're speaking, we're not really listened to, but when white people are speaking, they're, they're considered, I'm, they're, they're listened to more. And it just feels very unfair, and I think it's reflection, it, it's, it's a reflection on the city council, frankly, at this point. Um, and you need to do better. I mean, our, our Gary Oaks are, we are, they're the only native species we have in Washington. They're ideally suited to survive climate change because they're heat resistant and they're amazing at carbon sequestration when they're large.
Two seconds.
They offer large canopies. Again, I think it's a complete shame what the city council has done today to, to those children, and I think you guys need to protect these trees and let the kids speak. That's it. That's my time.
Thank you. We now move to uh, get your mayor Dunlap.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hello, my name is T. Homer Dunlop, and I'd like to talk about how it seems to me that the city of Lakewood isn't taking immediate, immediate action regarding climate change. So often people say how climate change can't, can't be tackled by, at an individual level, by making environmentally conscious choices, like riding a bike instead of driving an internal combustion engine car, but saying this isn't really going to make a meaningful impact, even if individuals do their best. Why? Because climate change is a problem at an individual level. It's a problem at a societal level. Even if individuals do their best, it isn't going to make the core issue go away. In our society, it is impossible to live even a remotely carbon-neutral lifestyle. Doing things like driving less are all well and good, but they're only lessening one's negative impact, not erasing it. Through advertising, corporations have tried to make climate change a societal issue into an individual issue to rid themselves of responsibility. Take recycling, for example. A huge corporation like Coca-Cola produces billions of plastic bottles. It is, it is, sorry. Yet it is, it is the consumer's responsibility to recycle it. Now people complain that it is not feasible to recycle plastic because China doesn't accept it anymore. Government, government needs to put pressure on companies to operate in an environmentally responsible way. Similarly, Lakewood needs to make citywide changes that need to be revolutionary and forward-thinking, that set an example to its residents and to other cities. Take just one small example. Why is it the Lakewood hasn't banned plastic bags and styrofoam takeout containers when other cities have? Shouldn't we be ashamed that they still try to give you a styrofoam takeout container when you go to the teriyaki place? Shouldn't there be a taboo? Who cares if it's cheaper to do it that way? The earth is at stake. But thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mark Pfeifer.
There we go. My name is Mark Pfeifer. I'm a resident of Lakewood. I live in the Lake City um, neighborhood. And, you know, twenty-five years ago, when Lakewood was started, there were a lot of lofty things said about tree preservation. And as I understand it, the last time the Lakewood municipal code governing tree preservation was addressed or changed was twenty years ago. And I understand also that the council is considering putting uh, work on the, on, on the, the code uh, as being on the work plan for the Planning Commission. And I support that. I, I know that these kinds of things, uh, when you consider property owner rights and the like, you, you don't just by some sort of fiat go and, and make big changes. It has to be considered and all parties uh, should have an opportunity to, to speak and, and express their views and, and that's what uh, the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department and, and the planners, that's, that's their function. And I look forward to, to that being on the work plan when the council, if and when the, the council decides to put it on the work plan. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Helen Wagner.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Um, may I provide your comments?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, very faintly.
Uh-oh. What happened? He says it's faint. Just talk loudly here. My name is Helen Wagner. I live in Lakewood. According to President Biden in a news brief today, one in three Americans has been affected by extreme weather this summer. That's a catastrophe. It seems impossible, but climate change is creating the impossible. We know that we have to do something about it, but we are having trouble finding a way to start. Perhaps the simplest thing to do uh, is to start with simple things. We know that more vegetation and fewer man-made uh, inter, interferences with the natural world are a good beginning. Asphalt and warehouses do not uh, do anything to repair the damage. They make the environment hotter, the oceans get warmer and spawn hurricanes and tornadoes, which in turn are growing more violent and creating flooding and other destruction. Look at what happened in uh, Northern Europe this summer. It looked as though Germany were washed down the Rhine. Now we are witnessing what is happening on our own Gulf Coast. Let us hope that it is not already too late. What can we do? Right here in Lakewood, we could start with mitigation. Saving our old trees and creating less pavement and fewer warehouses. Saving our beautiful oaks is a step in the right direction. They lower the amount of carbon dioxide and create places for native creatures to live. On a very basic level, they cool the earth by providing shade. So why would one take living things for something or prefer living things for something as artificial as a warehouse? In the name of keeping our planet habitable, we need to prohibit cutting down these treasures. The lives of our children depend on our reversing, or perhaps at least stopping, the destruction of earth. Please stop allowing the cutting of our oaks. I am asking that all of us preserve them because our future depends on a change of heart. Thank you for your attention.
Uh, next to speak is Jason Gothier.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Jason Gothier. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at Habitat for Humanity. And I'm attending tonight to speak to the public hearing on the draft ordinance adopting policies and priorities concerning ARPA funds. Our organization has been.
Mr. Gothier?
Sure.
The public hearing will follow the public comment, so if you want your comments to be on the record, you're welcome to speak now, but if you want your comments to be on the record, it needs to be in the public hearing uh, item which follows this.
Sure, then I will wait till that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the people online. I'd see. Sam. Have any more hands up, Madam Clerk?
Hello?
Oh, Sam is.
Can you hear me? Hello?
First I identified as Sam, it's your turn to speak. Please identify yourself and see your residence.
Hi, my name is Sam. I live in city of Seattle and I'm calling regarding the uh, I'm calling, uh, making a comment, public comment to advocate for the protection of currently existing Gary Oak trees. Um, migrating the negative effects of tree cutting will do little to help the residents of Lakewood as Gary Oaks are slow-growing trees and there's no guarantee that top plants will survive. Gary Oaks are the only native species in Washington. They're ideally suited to survive climate change. And I oppose Lakewood's allowance of cutting two trees per year on smaller lots, as well as the allowance of four trees for lots over thirty, thirty thousand square feet. It is a racist and classist injustice that so many of our Gary Oak trees are being cut down in low-income, racial and ethnic minority neighborhoods. It's outrageous that these trees are being replaced by warehouses, many of which will remain unused. The warehouses will increase peak summer temperatures in surrounding areas, also increasing air pollution and noise pollution. I've also heard that Lakewood plans to turn the Colonial Center's old QFC complex into a ninety-foot apartment building with hundreds of units and space for hundreds of cars. This is outrageous. The city has no other buildings of the sale, so in the post-project, we'll overwhelm the area, not to mention the area oak deaths that will be necessary for this development to proceed. You must reject the constructive development efforts. In addition, I think what happened with public comments today was absolutely outrageous. And I think that you should have let everyone speak. Thank you.
Sam, can you please provide your last name for the record?
Sam Harris.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back, go to people that signed in on the second sheet. Uh, and please abide by the rules of decorum and you will be heard. First person to speak is Ado Equitas.
My name is Ado Equitas. I am the chairman of the White Panther Party. I am a resident. They are residents. You work for them. I don't know why we have to keep telling you this. But I will. I would like to start out by thanking the members of the city council that kept their seat even after the recess was called because the big bad men were getting ready to come talk. And by big bad men, I don't mean me. I'm big, I'm bad, and I'm a man. I mean him. You're scared of a child. It's his world, not yours. You're going to be gone before him unless one of your little lackeys gets him first. Oh, is it? Okay.
You can criticize the city council, but you are not to attack employees of the city.
Few days ago. He was shooting a gun and the cop shot him. The person that called the police then spoke and said, you know what? I wish I never had, because he did not deserve to die. So you might find that out of order, but the citizens do not because people are dying. He must have taken Mike Wiley's class. So again, to the members that stayed to let us speak, we appreciate you. We appreciate that you know that we're talking because we want the best for the city of Lakewood. Not the best for the mayor of Lakewood. Those two should go hand in hand. These people would love to be behind you. Why will you not fight for them to be behind you? They want a leader. They're thirsty for it. They'll walk through the desert without a drink to get it. And you could give it to them. And you refuse every day by not allowing the children to speak. Who cares if they're gonna say what their mother said? She wanted to speak too. Let the children speak because you're there, Mayor, too.
Thank you.
All power to the people.
Bunchy Carter is next. And I'm sorry I can't pronounce your name. Olenia X?
Well, first I want to apologize for dropping foul language. Unfortunately, I was raised by a father who has no good language in his vocabulary. Yeah. I laugh about that one often. Um, my apology isn't for you, it's for the children. They shouldn't have to hear that. I apologize. It was ugly. I just wanted to come up here and say something nice about the trees because they're beautiful. And about our brother Said Joakim. And the young man that had a mental breakdown just the other day, had a mental breakdown. His support animal died and he broke down. He fired his gun, which was a poor choice. Unfortunately, he made that choice because he was not well. Somebody called the police because they were concerned. They should know how to de-escalate. They escalated and killed him. He had no gun in his hand. I don't even know the young man's name because it hasn't even been released. Twenty-one years old. My son is only nine. Nine. Looks like a grown ass man. Pardon my language. Looks like a grown man because of his eyes. He's almost as big as me. I can't even imagine the pain that those parents feel every time one of these officers, which is the word that is given to them on their shirt, to officiate. I'm gonna just give the rest of my time for a moment of silence. All power to the people.
Next up is James Dun- Dunler. Or Dunlop. Dunlop?
Thank you for this opportunity to comment. My name is James Dunlop and I am a resident of Lakewood. Um, before I start, I would like to point out, as others have done, that on Saturday night, um, a young man was shot and killed by Lakewood Police. And there are conflicting reports about what happened. And I hope, um, we can find out what did happen, um, as soon as possible. Now, I was going to comment on the subject of opportunity zones, which, um, the city likes to make much of, but I think they are an extremely destructive thing. But I think instead what I need to, need to, um, what I need to comment on is, is the mayor. Now, I'm going to be quite civil, but I do believe, um, that the mayor is, um, not doing his job very well and probably needs to be replaced. Um, I don't know what procedures there are for it. We got a sense of this at a, at a council study meeting on July the 12th, when the mayor showed himself to be very thin-skinned. He, he embarked on this huge monologue about Lakewood not liking Seattle, not liking Tacoma. He said some bad things about trains. There was an article in the Tacoma News Tribune, which was slightly critical about the coun- about the council, saying it needed more diversity. And he, you know, he couldn't accept any criticism of this. And more recently, we've seen his inability to take, you know, the mildest of pressure. And what we saw today, Melissa came in and her children's, what does he say? He says, you said, um, that she's exploiting her children. That was provocative. You did it with a peanut gallery remark. You are provoking people here and making it very difficult to have, to have, have a sensible, peaceful meeting. Furthermore, I think you're being quite inconsiderate to the police officer here. He shouldn't have to deal with your thin-skinned behavior. He shouldn't have to, have to control people. You know, that's, that's your job. You're supposed to keep control here. So what I would suggest, and you know, to the council, because I saw that meeting on, on July the 12th, when the mayor was going off on his monologue, you know, it was, it was embarrassing. And I've only got ten seconds left, but what I would say is, you need to take the mayor aside and suggest that, you know, he's a council member, he can run his term, but someone else needs to take over from him.
Next, uh, person up is Jan Hutchins. Jan Hutchins?
Thank you. I want to talk about the ARPA fund, so I think I need to wave.
You want to testify at the public hearing on ARPA? Okay. Now, I will, will, I will call on the children. They can't reach the mic, so what I'd like them to do is come up and stand in front of us where we can hear them and give us their name and the grade they're in and tell us what they want to say. So Nick Snod, would you like to speak? Hey, is there one that we can hand to them? We have to wait for them, like, because it's not, it's being recorded. Okay.
Need a microphone to be on the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name, my name is Nick Snod, and I want to say why you didn't let us talk the last two times. And the last time you, it was locked. The, the doors are locked. And I want to say, you can't cut down, it's not okay to cut down these trees because there's only a few of these trees. And if you cut down some, all of these trees, then we'll have no more of these Gary Oak trees. And Gary Oak trees are very important to the world. It helps us and it helps us breathe and it helps us, um, does all that stuff. And it, it helps things grow and it grows roots. And you can't, it's not okay to cut down these trees. It's because if you cut down these trees, there's only a few of them. And if you cut down these trees, then it, then it's very bad. And put up all these warehouses that do nothing for no one, literally does nothing for no one, put up all these warehouses for literally no reason. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Next would be Freya Knott. Freya, would you like to turn? Just say your name and give us a grade you're in.
Um, my name is Freya. Freya, Freya Knott. Um, and I gotta say, if you're gonna cut down oak trees, that's rude to the city. And it's not helping anybody. It's just cutting down oak trees are bad. And I have to say that oak trees are great to the world and there's stuff going on in the world that are making the world very bad to the world. And trying to make this world better, but not gonna stop until it gets away. So it's gone.
Thank you. Mr. X, is your son wishing to speak? Please say your name and tell us your grade. Give us your, talk.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Tashawn. I'm in ninth gr- fourth grade. The reason why I'm choosing to speak is because these, is we need these trees. It's, um, improve, improves our air quality. It helps provide clean water, helps create jobs, helps, um, that help, it helps temperature, temp- temperature control, helps people with mental health. It also helps animals with food. And shelter. Please, please let's save our trees. Stop cutting down our trees. Thank you.
So that, that concludes public comment. I declare public comment closed. We now move to the I have three papers here. They all have names on. Okay, well, please line up behind the podium if you wish to speak and haven't signed up. So I can go from one to the next.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Michael Escobedo, owner of See Me Rise and a co-founder of Rise Against Racism, the nonprofit in Washington State. I live in Lakewood, buy the house here. And I'm here to wake up our citizens and teach them how to stand up against racists. First, the name of the Colonial Plaza must be changed. If you don't want to be held responsible for the colonists that came to settlers that, that, remember, genocide of the Native Americans, because that's the truth, then let's go ahead and rename it, maybe the American Public Square. Give us a place to be together, you know, together. Like I said, to say they're, they're colonos- col- colonials is to admit the genocide and persecution of Native Americans. Second, instead of celebrating the lie, Christopher Columbus, let's instead celebrate the indigenous people this land belongs to. And hopefully we can get one of those proclamations for Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. And another thing with the proclamations, why don't we have all of y'all's names on the proclamation instead of the mayor only? Yeah, my bad. Yeah, I would like to see all the names of the city council members on the bottom of those proclamations. You know, why do y'all let the, the mayor control things like that? Like, it's only his thing. You know, it should be all of y'all. It should be involved. And then, most importantly, I'm gonna talk about Said. You know, we all have, uh, public access to the videos, to all the, everything. You know, and I could tell you, it starts with, he should have never been pulled over. If you go to the stop sign at the end of Whitman, then you'll see that the police cannot even see somebody who stopped at the stop sign because of the fences there. It forces everybody to roll past the stop sign. So you just start there and he should have never even been pulled over. But it got worse, you know? So the, the other officer parks his car so the camera can see Said's car. And then Officer Wiley parks his car in front of that camera and does this thing. We all know, he killed him. He, uh, within three minutes, he watched him die for four minutes. And then they try to help him out. Another police, a black police, comes in. He puts his car facing Said on the floor of the body. And then another old white cop pulls up in his car and blocks that camera. I mean, all these officers should be off this force now. You know what I mean? We have people out there, children out there, people are dying every single day. And you can witness it. It's on the videos, guys. Just give yourself a couple of hours and I promise you, you're gonna see exactly what I saw. And you're gonna see the disgusting cover-up. And hopefully, y'all be able to do something about it. You know, I didn't want to talk about it for a long time because I didn't know the, the facts, but I know the facts now. And we want justice. Thank you.
My name's Kyle Jollyboys and I'm a Tacoma resident. And I want to commend if Jenna Lee is listening, I commend you. You see, I have cerebral palsy and I stand up for my city. And I know these children. They've been in my home for years. And they stand up more than the city council has, I'll tell you that. They're eight and six. And I've seen them standing up for years in Tacoma against an LNG plant that is now live. And that's what I deal with in Tacoma, a live LNG plant with the prospects of filling it with eight million gallons of liquefied natural gas that will prove a fifteen-mile hole in Tacoma. I don't know what Lakewood is thinking. They wanted to be a city so badly. And ever since cityhood, you guys have failed over and over and over. Knocking down trees to put up concrete, um, not having any cannabis shops for people that might want to enjoy cannabis or use it for their medicine. It's great revenue, Mayor. And it helps out people. See, I'm a cannabis patient. And I was targeted by Sheriff Troyer. And I say it as often as I can publicly, because he is an embarrassment to the police force. And this gentleman back here should be commended for what he does. He stands up for you guys. I come out here from Lakewood, I mean, from Tacoma to Lakewood, to stand with my friends, to support them. And you guys weren't here last week. How embarrassing. That people have to come from other cities to stand up. See, I was a resident from Lakewood from seventy-nine until the mid-nineties. My mother still lives here. And if my father was alive, he didn't want this place to be a city because he knew what it would become. And it has become. You guys need to gather together and, and, and do an inventory on yourselves and where you want this city be, because you guys are reckoning. We have our own police murders in Tacoma. And I stand up for them. We have a gentleman named Manny Ellis that was killed by multiple police officers, just like Said was. I don't get it. I don't get why people in power abuse it. We put you guys here. Everything you have is because of us, the taxpayers. Remember that. Because we will remember in November. I yield my time.
So the people who stepped up to the podium, is there anyone? Please light up behind the podium if you wish to speak. When the line's done, we're gonna be done with the public comment here. So, next.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo, and I'm here tonight to say that I came here to speak for somebody else and talk about the trees because they couldn't be here. Seeing what happened when I got here, that you denied the children, and I'm happy that you let them speak. And I'm glad that the Lord touched your heart to do that. That's beautiful. I will not stop fighting till you are not mayor anymore. I will not stop fighting until Whitman Avenue is called Said Joakim and my, like, Mike Wiley is in the, is locked up. Do you even have anybody that looks at the videos of what happens? Do any of the city council members look at them? I watched every audio, every video recording. I read everything. I read every dispatch. I listened to everything. We need justice. Failure of justice shows that you are just doing the same thing. Doing the same thing is insanity. Us allowing you to do the same thing is insanity. I was gonna bring my children up here, but I'm glad I did it because I would have been furious. I would have called the news station, every single one- I would have called the news station, every single one of them. I want you to know that we are here for accountability, we are here for awareness, we're here for action. And for you that are good-hearted and you hear my voice, thank you. And just to let you know, the terrorists are racist in this country. I don't understand why you let the racist person speak. You should shut him down and stop that racism, but you complicitly allow it. And that hurts me. Why? Why does it hurt me? I was at a Walmart and somebody came up to me and said, I'm proud to be an American. They don't know that I did time in the military. They don't know that I stood there and watched people put out caskets and plates. They don't know that I stood there, saluted and prayed because that wasn't me. And I'm tired of it and I'm demanding change. I did not go to war to sit down quietly. I'm a MST survivor from the military. I dealt with somebody spanking me while I was deployed. Put their hands on me. I would not allow this anymore. This is enough. And I expect the city council to get a new mayor in there. This is my demand.
Next, please.
Hello, you guys can hear me?
All right. Please state your name and city of residence, you might have to get close to me.
My name is Alendo. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I'm a resident of Spanaway, Washington. This evening, I, I came here just to come to support, to see how these meetings are. This is my first time publicly speaking. Don, I asked you if I will be able to speak tonight. And I appreciate this opportunity given. What I've noticed over these past meetings I've gone to is a sense of so what I'm looking for, of, of, of lack of, of caring from both sides. We're all humans at the end of this day and we're all indigenous to this, to this earth. And these Gary Oak trees are also indigenous to this, to this land, to this land of Washington. In Oak Bay in British Columbia, you can get fined ten thousand dollars just for damaging one oak tree. And now we're damaging all of them in just this state alone. And in southwest Washington, in Thurston County, there's different conservation organizations that are there to stop the shutdown of these trees. So the people are telling you that there is environmental racism going around and that there's something that has to be done to it. If not, everybody suffers. Because even though these are in, um, lower class minority, um, areas, there's also people of all different races and backgrounds that stay up here. So it is a, it's a massive effort of not being able to, to help the, the citizens of this city. Also want to thank the officer tonight for doing his best to keep things going on when it was a little hectic. I want to thank the last speaker for her service in the military. And what she said was also very poignant because it shows also, um, uh, something that we all go through, and that's PTSD, whether you have PTSD through military service or you have PTSD through the community. We're all suffering. We've all had, uh, pretty bad last couple of years. But as a, as a community, if we can find each other's common ground, we can, we can help each other. I, and a lot of times over the past month, I've seen a lot of indifference in the eyes of, of you guys. Sometimes I wonder, oh man, I just want to go home. I can't wait till the last speaker comes, I can just clock out and go. But over the last few meetings, especially tonight, I've seen a lot of concern on your eyes. So I really do appreciate that. Um, I hope everybody comes, goes home safe tonight. And that we can have more discussions like this to build as a community. Before I leave, because I only have fifteen seconds. There was a comment made to this brother regarding his lack of terminology. And I looked up the Marion Webster definition of lackey, and it actually means servant as a noun and a verb is to behave and to serve our way towards someone. So, um, Don Anderson, even though that you said that, he was, that that wasn't a word, lackey is a definition, so.
Thank you. That's all the people who have signed up and lined up. So I declare public comment closed. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. So we now move to public hearings and appeals. This is a date set for a public hearing on the draft ordinance adopting policies and priorities concerning the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds and allocating ARPA funds to certain expenditures. For this, we have, in introduction to this, we have Ms. Tiffany Spear, the planning manager, who will join us virtually.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany Spear, Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager for the City of Lakewood. I am going to do a brief PowerPoint for you because several things have changed since the study session of several weeks ago when the American Rescue Plan Act discussion was held at that meeting. So, uh, as I just mentioned, there was a study session on August twenty-third. And there was a presentation regarding in specifics, the community engagement results. And also to talk about potential use and allocations of the thirteen point seven, six million dollars coming to the City of Lakewood through the American Rescue Plan Act. Tonight is the evening for the, uh, public hearing. Since the last discussion and in your packet tonight is an updated proposed ordinance. Uh, the idea of using, uh, the funds in part for utility payment arrears has been removed from the ordinance and I'll be discussing that in just a moment. And then several items have been added. First of all, a housing safety crisis response program and eviction defense and prevention program. Also contributing to the Pierce County's BIPOC Business Accelerator Program. Dollars for vaccination incentives to city residents. Uh, and then a retention bonus for the up to eighty-five officers at seventy-five hundred dollars apiece in exchange for a commitment to remain with the Lakewood Police Department for three years. And then within the ordinance, there's also additional explanation as to why it is, it would be an emergency ordinance with an immediate effect. Sorry, one second. Just very quickly, graphically, this shows the, uh, kind of ballpark or the economy of scale, lack of a better way to say it. But the proportionate share, I should say, to Washington State, Pierce County, and then the City of Lakewood from the American Rescue Plan Act. So obviously, Washington State itself received the vast majority of the funds and it's distributed that among her, among a number of items. Pierce County received almost a hundred and seventy-six million and then Lakewood's thirteen point seven-six. Um, just a clarification as well from the last time this was brought before you. That the eligible, uh, costs are incurred by the city beginning March third of this year. But it may be spent on costs that were, um, experienced or harm experienced by households, businesses and individuals prior to March third of twenty-twenty-one. So that's just something that when, uh, the call for applications happens, we'll be needing to clarify. These are the seven categories within which the, uh, council is recommending, or the city is recommending to the council, excuse me, to track the dollars and how they're spent. There are four basic tenants that the city council established back in March. Uh, the one percent set aside for human services, using ARPA generally for one-time costs, filling the gaps versus duplicating funds that are available elsewhere, and then conducting community engagement. Um, just a moment here because there was discussion last time about the availability of both rental assistance and also utility assistance elsewhere. Uh, these are in the meeting packet this evening and also available online. But Pierce County offers a rental assistance program portal, as does, uh, the Energy Utility Assistance Page. And then there's also coming up on September fourteenth, a landlord Q and A session with the Pierce County's Rental Assistance Program specifically geared toward landlords. So if they are seeking how to receive funds themselves, in addition to those that may be going to tenants, that's the day to go and find out about that from the county. And then quickly for electrical service, this is a map just demonstrating the fact that the City of Lakewood has four different, um, providers within the city. So knowing where you live and which provider, uh, is providing ARPA assistance for your address is important. And then this again is available online and in this meeting packet. But these are links to all of the various utility assistance programs, uh, that I was able to locate regarding energy, power, light and power, water and sewer. And there's also an emergency broadband benefit as well from the federal, uh, level as well. Very quickly, there was a presentation last week about the housing precarity risk model. It was presented to Pierce County elected leadership. And that information is available online now and it's also included in this packet. But the reason I bring it to you is just first explain what precarity is, resilience to economic and environmental shocks, in particular related to pre-pandemic unemployment and also, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, also pandemic experience. Pierce County itself is considered number one, first of all, in the state of Washington for unemployment. Um, and then relatively high in the, in the country regarding eviction and housing precarity. Bringing that into Pierce County again, all renters at sixty-eight percent in moderate to high precarity neighborhoods. And then you see the large majority of Asian, Black and Latinx, as well as a majority of white renters in high precarity neighborhoods in our county. This is a map that shows the entire county and you see the darker colors are where there is a higher rate of this risk of eviction. And in Lakewood proper, you'll, this is, sorry, it doesn't have the municipal boundaries, but in general, there's Lakewood. And, uh, not a surprise, I don't think, but the, uh, qualified census tracts per ARPA also are high precarity eviction risks. So this is one more reason to be focusing dollars perhaps within these areas of the city. So one thing that's new in the ordinance, as I mentioned, is an eviction protection program. This is something that up until this year, when the Right to Counsel program goes into effect, uh, was available in the City of Lakewood, but once Right to Counsel is, um, activated this month, City of Lakewood will be excluded from that program. And so the idea is to fund at least for one year additional support for Lakewood-specific residents regarding eviction protection, particularly as we're getting close to September thirtieth. So the cost there would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. The other thing, there's a little detail here about is the Pierce County Business Accelerator for BIPOC businesses. This was something that was developed by Pierce County in conjunction with Korean Women's Association, Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, the Black Collective, Tacoma Urban League and Mio Centro. So there was a lot of outreach and, um, seeking subject matter experts from various, uh, peoples of color and their cultural contacts. A five million dollar contribution was made by the county. The City of Lakewood has been asked to put in five hundred thousand dollars. The idea is to be training people by mid-September, so launching very soon and working its way through next, uh, May for up to twenty-five businesses within eight cohorts or a total of two hundred businesses. This is certainly a program that could go beyond next May, but that's the first phase. And the idea here, you'll see the curriculum, uh, topics being covered. And also the fact that the, uh, BIPOC community is the source of the instructors as well. So trying to make sure that you have, uh, cultural competency in the classroom as these things are being taught. This is the contact information for the, uh, Business Accelerator Program specifically, and also, uh, to the various cultural points of contact. And as it says here, uh, the first round of applications are actually due in a couple of days. And then by the end of this month, that first cohort will be, uh, up and running. We've mentioned the qualified census tracts already, but just one more time, this is the map of where that are located within the city. Tillicum and Woodbrook, Springbrook, parts of Lakeview and parts of Montevista. The Department of Treasury has said, uh, educational disparities, early healthy childhood environments, social determinants of health, uh, building stronger neighborhoods and then access to health and social services are all automatically qualified. Things that can be done with ARPA funds within the qualified census tracts. This is, um, what was discussed at length at the August twenty-third study session, the outreach and the results of that outreach to people and stakeholders and businesses, uh, about what they felt, what they thought the needs were for the ARPA dollars within the City of Lakewood. Very quickly, you'll see, uh, something here kind of summarizing all the various topics and, um, types of response you got. Navigators was the top requested item, uh, dealing with both businesses and residents needing help finding what services and, and, uh, dollars are available. And then there was also, uh, an online survey where rent was raised, not only by landlords, but by renters as well, saying that is their number one need. Uh, there was a response by a majority of both people who lived and worked in Lakewood that the city should consider partnering with other jurisdictions to maximize outcome. Excuse me, sorry. Um, and then with collaborations, we continue to work toward the purchase of the Comfort Inn on South, uh, excuse me, South Eighty-Fourth. And, uh, to deal with emergency housing shelter here within the next month or so. The five hundred thousand dollars I mentioned for the BIPOC Accelerator Program. Uh, discussing leveraging ARPA funds in other ways, which is still an ongoing discussion. There's not a lot of detail yet there. Coordinating business navigation services with the county. Looking at infrastructure funding in coordination with state legislative action this next session. And also potentially, uh, some funding for affordable housing through the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. The city's preliminary, uh, number of lost revenue in the year twenty-twenty was three million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand and four, four hundred and five dollars. Um, that can go toward this list here in the middle, a number of various things. Um, the one caveat is it may not be used for pension deposits, contributions for reserve funds or debt service. Um, and then we're also within this, uh, ordinance, you'll see now, information about direct and indirect costs as part of the expenditures and allocations. Per treasury, they say that for the direct, um, programs or expenditures made by the city or dispersals, administrative costs should go toward that total. Indirect general overhead of, uh, what the city needs to do to track the ARPA program should be categorized separately. So what we've done, excuse me. What we've done here is have one line item specific to the indirect administrative costs. And then another that is for the five percent administrative cost, sorry. It was tied into the project costs as well, and you'll see that in just a moment. The summary of recommendations that was provided to you on August twenty-third, use the Department of Treasury's categories. Higher additional staff to administer the ARPA program and the total number and type of staff you will need is going to depend on what the city's final decisions are regarding how the funds will be used. Target the use of ARPA funds within qualified census tracts and also leverage, uh, the money with other programs or expenditures that may be ongoing. And also don't spend all of the money before the city understands and takes advantage of, uh, possibilities of collaboration with other governments or organizations. So within the ordinance, you'll see four proposed policies in addition to those that were come up with by the city in March. Providing resource navigation services particularly to residents. Providing support for disproportionately impacted communities. Uh, and then also delivering services in a, in a more efficient and effective way by the city in this post or during COVID world. Um, there's also priorities of use for the funds. These are not listed in order of priority. But the vaccination efforts, working with, um, United Way and other organizations is needed to again come up with an effective navigation program for residents. Do also a resource navigation service for businesses, particularly BIPOC and small businesses. And then providing financial assistance to those that operate in Lakewood and provide ARPA eligible services to its residents. Maintain existing and create new affordable housing and supporting, uh, emergency shelter units. Also provide, providing government services, so partnering with others, whether it be West Coast Fire and Rescue, the library, sewer or other utility districts, et cetera. Improve remote access to city services, funding capital and non-capital improvements to city facilities. Maintaining a supply of non-capital ARPA eligible supplies, particularly PPE. Maintaining a supply of non-capital ARPA eligible supplies, particularly PPE and also replacing lost revenue. So in summary, then, the way it's recommended within the ordinance is that the dollars get shared, as you see on the screen here, between the seven categories. The highest one, highest percentage, excuse me, is services to disproportionately impacted communities, closely followed by the negative economic impact category, revenue replacement, and then infrastructure, general administrative costs, and then the public health. The way this breaks out in terms of suggested initial expenditures, on the top you'll see four, which actually the city has already talked about, and the city council actually took at least one piece of formal action regarding. So first would be the million dollars plus administrative costs for the purchase of the Comfort Inn in partnership with Tacoma and the county. Secondly, it would be the allocation to the Lakewood CSAB for allocating additional dollars in twenty-two and twenty-three. Third is the Warriors of Change Program that Councilmember Branstad mentioned earlier this evening. And fourth would be the police body camera purchase and five years' worth of operations that were approved by motion twenty twenty-one forty-seven a few meetings ago. In addition to that, initial expenditures are recommended for supporting the county's BIPOC administrator, I'm sorry, BIPOC Business Accelerator Program, the vaccination incentives, the retention bonus for Lakewood police officers, the Lakewood eviction defense and prevention project for one year. Highlighting the remainder of the city's lost revenue, less the body cameras and the retention bonus. And then also the, the indirect administrative costs for the city. If all of those things were to be approved and expended right away, that would be a subtotal of six million six hundred eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars, meaning there's almost seven point one five million left for future expenditures. As you see here, broken out with what are remaining, though most of them would be disproportionately impacted communities dollars, followed by negative economic impact funds and then the infrastructure funds. At the top of this slide, you'll see four options for the council. So taking no action at all since the action isn't required until the end of twenty twenty-four. And then taking a look at various combinations of adopting policy priority and allocation categories, and then whether or not to approve any expenditures yet. So after tonight's public hearing, there will be an additional study session next Monday, the thirteenth. And then at this point, it's scheduled that there be action on the ARPA ordinance, whether as it stands or with amendment on September twentieth. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen. Thank you, Tiffany. And if we could through the city manager, just get a PDF, maybe you've provided that. It seems to be updated from what's in our packet, so I'd love to have something to chew on a little bit.
I believe it was provided to you today.
Okay, very good. My question to you, just briefly on one of the slides, could you overlay or at least reflect the census areas or the census tracts at issue? Because I know we talked about some other qualifications for use of those funds, but I just want to get a, I understand generally where they are, Springbrook area, Tillikum, Northeast Lakewood. I just want to have everyone take a quick peek at that and how that overlay fits with some of the other areas in the city.
So.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. So this is Tillikum, and it was mentioned at the last meeting, geez, that the waterfront property is going to be a different economic bracket than those closer to I five. But then you also have Woodbrook, so that is one census tract.
Got it.
Seven eighteen oh six is Springbrook, but it also actually crosses I five and comes a little bit on to the other side of the highway. Seven eighteen oh five is part of Lakeview, not all of it, and then seventeen oh eight is part of Montevista.
Okay. I'd never heard of Montevista before, but Northeast Lakewood makes sense to me. Thank you very much. Had you heard of Montevista, right? Okay. Any questions? Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Ms. Sphere. Ms. Sphere, in your presentation about rental assistance, and you spoke about the county program and, and others, but it wasn't clear to me how broadly that covered both commercial and residential rental. Is that a single program or are there separate county programs in the landlord limited relief program or others? Have we got every, have we, do these cover everything or is the commercial landlord, commercial rental an outlier?
I will say that the information provided in tonight's meeting packet and all of those links go to the residential programs. And honestly, I don't know for sure how much or how robust the commercial landlord assistance is by the county or anyone else. I think most of the focus has been on residential, but perhaps the mayor or council member Bokey would know if the county is offering commercial landlord assistance as well.
And in the outreach where navigator was the and rent were the, the big, big words in the, in the display. That also uncovered feedback from commercial renters and landlords as well. So do we have a break, is it possible to get a breakdown of the public input that we got that differentiates, at least tells us how significant the commercial piece is. I'm certain the residential piece is, but I have some anecdotal information that the, that, that we're actually have been losing some businesses because they, they've moved out of their higher-end Lakewood locations to other places in the county. And I think that we want to, in a consideration of our use of ARPA dollars, that's a direct impact that ARPA dollars are intended to help us direct, even though they may not be physically located in one of the targeted census tracts. So if, when we come back next week, if we could take a look at dividing the residential commercial problem up so that we understand both sides of it, both in terms of what's there and what's needed.
I will do my best. I'm not sure with the results from the survey how clear that will be, whether the person answering the question is commercial or residential, but we'll go back and take a look at the responses to try to determine that.
Thank you. I don't know that I have much to add that, except that the rental assistance program at the county that's mentioned is through the Human Services Department that's aimed at residential tenants. I don't know of any direct appropriation with respect to commercial tenants. They were eligible for, I think it was PPE money under CARES Act. And that addressed it early on, but it has, to my knowledge, it hasn't been addressed since then. I don't know. Mr. Bokey, do you know?
I, I agree. I haven't heard anything about rental assistance that would be in that, remember it's separate ARPA money that comes down, I think through the state. So I don't even know, you know, we're getting inklings of what the amounts are going to be, but it's my understanding that it's all residential. But I mean, it's possible to look, remember now under ARPA, there's specific programs for entertainment venues, restaurants and things like that. So we need to understand that there, that some businesses are eligible for other items that we may not even be aware of, right? So we need to understand, you know, the staff would have to kind of ferret out. Well, what, if they're eligible for restaurant money, which they're getting through the SBA, I believe, then we might not want to delve into the restaurant side. And then there may be venues and I don't know. There's, there's some out there. So it's, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than the CARES Act was.
And I would just note that the hopefully final treasury guidance is expected in a week to a month from now. So at that point, we'll have some additional clarity as to what the restrictions are on this funding. Any other questions from Ms. Spear? And we'll move to the testimony portion of the public hearing here. The rules for testimony at the public hearing are very similar to public comment. When your name is called, please identify yourself by name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to speak. We'll try to give you a warning if you're not here in person. Otherwise, the yellow light will come on here if you're in person. You can testify virtually. You will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling in on the telephone at two five three two one five eight seven eight two and entering the meeting ID eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. It's on the screen. Or signing into zoom.us and entering that same meeting ID. While entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. When you were unmuted, please provide your name and city residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak virtually. Outside the public testimony, the app will allow you to use the raise hand function, but you will not be unmuted or allowed to speak beyond your three minutes. The difference between this and our public comment is that testimony at the public hearing is limited to the subject of the American Rescue Act Plan, ARPA funds, and the allocation of those ARPA funds. So with that said, the first person who has signed up is Jan Hutchins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and also Tiffany. My name is Jan Hutchins. I'm the executive director of LASSA. And we're located at eighty-nine fifty-six Gravelly Lake Drive. And five years ago, you had enough faith in us to help us create fifteen units of permanent supportive housing and our client services center. Tonight, I want to share a quick story with you, and I think you deserve to hear something good. It was, we met a couple and their baby, they were living in a tent. They came into our emergency shelter. They moved on into our permanent supportive housing. And I'm not going to go through all the hoops that they had to jump through. I'm just going to cut to the chase and tell you that today dad's a truck driver and mom finished college and is now going after her MSW. And baby is going into school. They overcame a lot of barriers. They were very driven. And they frankly, they could have left us over a year ago. They will be leaving us shortly because they have to, because the good news is they are becoming over income. The reason they didn't leave us before is because there was no place to go to. We do have emergency shelter and thankfully, you know, this hotel that might be coming online. What we don't have is enough temporary and transitional type of housing. And I am here to ask you to consider the ARPA dollars and encourage you to consider the one and a half acres of land that LASSA has. I call it land. The reality is there's houses on it. People are living there. But it is a beautiful piece of land. We have someone who is a friend of the agency who's going to do a drone video for us. And I will provide that to all of you and it will be able to give you a bird's eye view. If you want to come out beforehand and visit, we'll be happy to show you around. It'll give you a view of what can happen and what can be developed there. So I thank you for your past partnership. Hope that we can continue to partner to meet the needs of our community. And I'm going to leave behind some of our annual reports. If that's an allowable, I'll leave it here. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. Next person to sign up is Jason Gothier.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and members of the council. For the record, again, my name is Jason Gothier. And I'm the Director of Government Affairs at Tacoma Pierce County Habitat for Humanity. Our organization has spent the last ten years partnering with the city of Lakewood on the revitalization of the Tillikum neighborhood, adding three dozen affordable homeownership units and providing home repair opportunities for low-income members of the community. I'm sure the council has visited the neighborhood in recent years and noticed the differences these homes and their families make in this traditionally disinvested and overlooked community. One of the nice things about tradition is that it can, is that it can change and evolve. And the city of Lakewood's evolution on investments in this neighborhood has been and continues to be admirable. And as the city continues its commitment to Tillikum, so does our organization. And that's why our organization is asking the council to commit funding broadly to two priority categories to support disproportionately impacted communities and infrastructure. And specifically for infrastructure, infrastructure improvements, support our upcoming Tillikum development, a twelve-unit permanently affordable homeownership project. Prior to this meeting, I've sent along pro forma project information to the council on this project and the funding needs for this infrastructure investment associated with it. So I'll try to keep my time brief tonight and simply thank the council and the staff for your time tonight and continue to look forward to working with you in partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Haugen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Haugen.
Well, you know, you're doing a commendable job. But this ARPA is like, the federal government has thrown a gunny sack full of snakes, rattlesnakes. The reason for that is the federal government is no longer creating, is no longer creating in terms of deep gross national product, but they're printing money. And that means that everybody gets bitten. I doubt that you'll meet any of these goals. You may meet a few of them. But it will hurt the poorest people the most. Because inflation is a tax. And it's a tax because the government prints more money faster than the growth of the economy. And then, then it goes along with other problems that you got that counterbalance. I just went to our city council meeting. They spend their time talking about new businesses, jobs, opportunity, low unemployment rate. In other words, it's growing and it's including. It's inclusive in the sense that it's creating opportunity. Whereas in your case, you've got, you're going to have inflation, but you're going to have that added to all of your other headaches. Your image is one of anarchy, defunding police. You can't grow without law and order. There's no chance of growing. Now, in the homeless situation, you can't solve that problem either.
Thirty seconds.
People will come across and say it again, but you support it. You support it by allowing it to happen and encouraging it and even buying some of the drugs with pub, public money. Am I, is my time up? Is my time up?
Thirty seconds.
So, so you got a whole long list of problems that can only be solved if you get more competent people in the governor's office, the state legislator's office. And in, in this case, even nationally, because there's no question. We have one of the most incompetent governor, presidents we've had in a long time. It's just one mess after the other.
That's your time, Mr. Haugen. We now move to Jesse Black.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to, first of all, thank you for taking the time out to listen to me. I am suggesting to the council to use part of the ARPA money to provide a community center here in Springbrook. I've set forth a proposal and I've set forth a proposal and created a committee of partners to help us purchase the Center Force Building, which is for sale here in the neighborhood. This building would provide a community space, a place for agencies to come in to provide resources to help people in recovery. We have been partnered with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department and the vaccine clinics for almost a year now. And we've been hosting vaccine clinics in our local neighborhood park. That's coming to an end now that the weather's changing into winter. So having this community space would allow that to continue to go on and help us recover from this pandemic. We also are discussing with Pierce County Council about seeking funds through them as well for the purchase of this building. And I just asked that the council consider helping this community and the Tillicum and Woodbrook community, which is connected to us on bus lines, by providing this community center so we can provide resources for people that are in need of it. And thank you for my time.
Thank you. Next is Donna Ponapinto.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak, Donna Ponapinto. I live in Gig Harbor, Washington, and I'm President/CEO of United Way of Pierce County. Certainly, there's a, there are going to be a lot of requests to consider, and we want to, I want to thank you for considering the Centers for Strong Families on your list. What our Centers for Strong Families is all about, it's about designing efforts to help low-income individuals increase income, reduce debt, and generate wealth for themselves and their communities. This particular model provides low and moderate income families with access to high-quality, one-on-one career and financial coaching. Right now, we do have in the city of Lakewood, Clover Park Technical College has been a Center for Strong Families site since 2018, and really, one of our top centers. We are the intermediary as a united way for our seven centers and the location at Clover Park. Some of the results so far, 27% of the clients have improved their credit scores, 60% job placement for job seekers, 3,358 average savings total. And the list goes on and on, and I can provide additional information. But I think this particular program, especially when we look at so many families struggling as a result of COVID to make ends meet, and with a county where one in three families can't afford the basic needs, this type of program and model is really helping families, not only in Clover Park, but throughout the county, improve their financial well-being. And we all know that a job is not enough, and so many families are facing this financial tightrope. And again, just really appreciate your support and the partnership that we've had over the years with the city of Lakewood. And also, just to add a note about the 211 and ready to help support when it comes to navigation, access to services, something that we've been doing and very deeply rooted in over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Kim from Rebuilding Together South Sound.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Kim Taylor. I am the Operations Director for Rebuilding Together South Sound. I live in Tacoma, and I am speaking for the proposed program rebuilding's put forward called Rebuilding a Healthy Neighborhood. It is a partnership between Rebuilding Together South Sound, volunteers, neighbors, community leaders, and local organizations to revitalize neighborhoods. We have done the research and also are starting to see a lot of applications for home repair come to, or come through our process from your four focus areas, your qualified census tracts. What we are proposing is a community-led effort where we do several large home repair projects and then a number of more minor safety and beautification process. We also have the opportunity to have a resource fair there that we would be, love to have a lot of the other nonprofits, city services, anything that would benefit the community there as part of our time there and also involve the community as much as possible, see if there is a local park or community space that we could also include in our revitalization efforts. We appreciate our partnership in the past with the city of Lakewood, and we look forward to submitting an application for the ARPA funds. Thank you.
So all the people who have raised their hand to speak in the public hearing online, if anyone else online wishes to speak at the public hearing on the use of ARPA funding, please raise your virtual hand. Do you see any, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Anderson, no one has raised their virtual hand to speak.
Okay, so this is the last call, if you wish to speak in public hearing. During that, I declare the public hearing closed. I would just note for those who have participated that there will be many very good ideas, some of which will be bypassed by the city of Lakewood because there is funding from other sources who have a lot more money than we do. And so it's going to be a difficult decision, but thank you for participating. Now move to unfinished business. Oh, excuse me. Yeah. The consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 2, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of August 9, 2021. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $3,815,481.06 for the period of July 16, 2021 through August 13, 2021. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,429,074.31 for the period of July 16, 2021 through August 15, 2021. E, motion number 2021-59, authorizing the termination of a residential agreement to maintain stormwater facilities and to implement a pollution source control plan associated with parcel number 500-500-1690. And F, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of July 22, 2021.
Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Whalen.
Item A, minutes of August 2, 2021.
All right. Anyone else? To entertain a motion on the consent agenda, absent item A.
I move to accept, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Branstad that we adopt the consent agenda less item A. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to item A, approval of the minutes of council meeting of August 2. Mr. Whalen.
We received in our emails today some public comment from Christina Minetti regarding some clerical corrections, if you will, to the August 2, 2021 meeting minutes. In my mind, they're not substantive, but to the extent they accurately reflect the spelling of last names of those who spoke, I would suggest that we review and have the clerk modify the meeting minutes to accept the spelling corrections and minor wordsmithing. But it's, I guess I can.
Word smithing.
Yeah, well, there was a bulldozing two-word, should be one-word kind of a thing, but the words I'm most interested in correcting are the last names of those who spoke. Yeah, and her email, since it don't have in front of you, that was sent to all of us today at 6:00 PM, referenced corrections to the name of Christina, or into Noran, should read O R, or to Gren, O R T E N G R E N. There was a Sean Arnett, that should be A R E N T, according to this, according to her commenter. So again, good question, it's according to her, but it was public comment that came in, and to the extent there needs to be a correction to last names, I would suggest we try that.
As the parliamentary and political council, I would ask the councils' lead to make those corrections as housekeeping going forward. Should we receive such comments to the degree that they're substantive, we will certainly bring them to the council's attention. But I would concur with what the deputy mayor has observed, and we are always willing to change spellings of names and minor changes that would be housekeeping. And that doesn't actually require council action to modify the minutes, although now that it's outside the consent agenda, you do have to adopt the minutes. But we will take that as a direction going forward.
I'm glad I was able to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
So, Mr. Whalen, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would move to approve item A, the consent agenda, with the corrections to the spelling of the last names of those who spoke, as reflected in the email received by us today at 6:00 PM.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt consent agenda item A with spelling corrections to the last names of individuals who spoke. Is there any further comment? Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I did read the email of pressing concern about the minutes and while the spelling and those things are clerical and you're able to do that, there were a number of comments with respect to misinterpretation of the comments that were made. And that's really difficult to decide unless someone actually goes back and listens to the tape. And so I think that, and I would prefer to approve these minutes, having seen a clean copy. And so I would move to delay consideration of the approval until our meeting of September 20th, which would allow the clerk to provide us a clean copy on that agenda.
So I recognize that as a motion to continue to a date certain. Is there a second? Is there a second to Mr. Branstad's motion?
Second.
Okay, who's that? Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Second, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue the consideration of consent agenda item A until the next regular meeting. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm, thank you, I'm confused. I thought I understood the city attorney to say that corrections like these could take place outside of council action. Maybe I misinterpreted.
You did not misinterpret what I indicated. To the degree that the changes are not substantive, we're adding a word that doesn't change the meaning of a sentence, for example, or we're correcting the spelling of a name, that does not require council action. The types of minutes that you have typically for a city council in almost any city is our action minutes. And the necessary element is that you reflect what the motion was and what the vote was on said motion. After that, there is not a requirement to take verbatim minutes or something like that. So to the degree that the minutes don't reflect your recollection of the meeting, you are the final arbiter of that. And when you pass minutes, you're simply saying that they are generally accurate, not verbatim, but generally accurate. And so for purposes of not having to every week correct in accordance with the members of the audience's concern, what you would do is just underscore that you are willing to let the clerk use her discretion. If it's housekeeping, she will frequently ask either the manager or myself, you know, does this go beyond those bounds? And if we're still uncertain, we would certainly bring that back to you.
So to recap, we have removed item A from the consent agenda, so it's not subject to clerical correction as part of the consent agenda as passed. We have a motion on item A of the consent agenda to approve it with the correction of the spelling of names, but nothing beyond that. And we have a motion and a second to delay the consideration of item A until the next regular meeting. And now I'm going to call the question on the motion to continue to a time certain, the next regular meeting. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Aye. Ms. Moss, are you a yea or nay?
Yea.
We have a 3-3 vote. It does not have a majority, the motion fails. We now move to item A as amended. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries. Now we move to unfinished business. How'd we do, Ms. Walker?
There's no unfinished business, Mayor.
What?
There's no unfinished business.
Oh, I was asking Ms. Walker how we did from a parliamentary procedure standpoint.
I'm relieved to have this council as opposed to any number of others I get to see from other cities.
Thank you. Mr. Caulfield, no unfinished business, any new business?
No new business, Mayor.
And then we go to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. The next two items, I'd like to call upon our Strategic and Long Range Planning Manager, Tiffany Spear, to give you an update first on 2021 Buildable Lands Report and Population Allocation Targets. Following that presentation, she would like to walk you through what this body needs to do regarding appointing a member to the SSHAP Executive Board as well as an alternate. So with that, Miss Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So what I'm going to do is walk you through some information that relates to two topics. One is the 2021 Buildable Lands Report, and the other are the 2022 Pending Population and Growth Targets that are going to, at one point here in the near future, be assigned to the city of Lakewood through the year 2024. So some of you have seen this graphic before, but I like to think of it as my umbrella graphic. It shows from the land use perspective, the various levels of regulation and statute that ultimately are things the city of Lakewood needs to comply with. So first would be the Growth Management Act itself. Second would be a regional level of multi-county planning policies. Then there is the Pierce County, countywide planning policies, and then the city's own comprehensive plan and development regulations. So we use the word Vision 2050 a lot with land use planning right now. That is the name of the Central Puget Sound multi-county planning policies. So just remembering this graphic as the city is the base level, and it has to comply with both layers of regional and countywide planning policies, and then the state's Growth Management Act. So beginning in 1997, buildable lands reports were required and due every eight years now. And what they are intended to do is show, in essence, whether a city is planning for and then building out at a certain amount of growth, both for jobs and for people, that is consistent with the Growth Management Act, and also that what's happening on the ground is consistent with what is planned for in its own local comprehensive plan and enabled by its development regulations. The last buildable lands report was issued in 2014. The next is due this fall. And once that is done, then the city itself will be looking at the buildable lands report results. along with other multi-county planning policy and countywide planning policies to do its 2024 update to the city's comprehensive plan. This basically says what I just covered, but essentially the Buildable Lands Program takes a look at data on permit activity and then also reviews planning policies within comp plans and development regulations to see if the actual growth on the ground is consistent with what's planned for and if what is planned for locally is consistent with those regional accounting planning policies and the Growth Management Act. At the time that a buildable lands report is completed, if there is a conclusion that a city, Lakewood, for instance, either does not have enough employment capacity or not enough housing capacity, then there's some steps taken to try to suss out why and what steps might be recommended for the city to take in order to come into compliance. So in the 2024 build of a land report, very quickly, there was found to be a surplus capacity of housing for the amount of growth expected through 2030. Initially, the report said that Lakewood did not have enough capacity for jobs, but the city commissioned a report from Burke Consulting in order to verify that. And they found errors actually in the way the county had calculated for Lakewood its job capacity and also took a look at how the city was planning its commercial area. And in the end, came to the conclusion there was actually a surplus of job capacity as well. Now we're in 2021, and the idea again is to prep this report and its results in order to inform the 2024 state law required review of the city's comprehensive plan. This buildable lens report will look at information about jobs and housing growth needed through the year 2044. So it's going to be actually a 14-year timeframe. City of Lakewood has been working with Pierce County over the last 18 months to get information to them about recent past permit activity and also what's going on with our sub-area planning. And long story short, very draft, this is draft, I will say that one more time, this is draft. But the conclusion is that within both housing and employment, the city does have sufficient capacity in its land planning for the 2044 numbers. So if you look at the information on the left in red, what they did in order to come up with that conclusion was look at not only vacant property, but also underutilized or areas that are below a certain percent of density, for instance, in a higher density area, and also parcels that are, quote, "in the pipeline" or "are not yet available for development, but will be in the near future." So related to the buildable lands report are those targets that I just mentioned for both jobs and for housing units. And Vision 2050 now talks about the regional growth strategy. And within the regional strategy, there is a number for Pierce County as a whole itself and all of its cities to grow between now and the year 2044. Lakewood is considered what's called a core city because of its size. It and University Place and Puyallup are the three core cities completely within Pierce County. And then Auburn is split between Pierce and King. And so for all of those core cities, there is a share that's been assigned that Lakewood then be taking a percentage of. The Pierce County Council is the one that ultimately adopts both the jobs and the housing targets for all jurisdictions. But as it stands right now, this process is at the Growth Management Coordinating Committee level, which is the state or the staff counterpart, if you will, that provides information to the Pierce County Regional Council. And both the GMCC and the PCRC will be talking about this issue in this month and into October. And then once the PCRC has reviewed and provided information up to the Pierce County Council, it is scheduled to take action on this probably in early 2022. So looking at that core city idea, this is the regional geographies that are identified in Vision 2050. And you'll see that Lakewood there with the red arrow is again a core city. And it also has that dot, which is a regional growth center. And if you remember when the downtown sub-area plan was adopted in 2018, the boundaries of the regional growth center in Lakewood and the downtown are now the same. So that is the growth center for the city. These are the population numbers that were assigned out of the regional growth strategy. There in the red circle is the amount of the total growth coming to the core cities. And so it's 85,000 people and 44,000 jobs that are assigned, if you will, to the core cities within Pierce County. So between Lakewood, Puyallup, University Place, and Auburn, 44,000 jobs and 85,000 people, which translates into a smaller number of housing units, you assume about two and a half people per house in order to come up with the housing unit number, are what is being discussed and negotiated among the core cities as we speak. In 2020, Pierce County hired HBL as the consultant to assist with figuring out what the 2044 population targets and how job targets should be for all of the jurisdictions. They did it in two different ways for Lakewood and came up with two different numbers, both of which are significantly higher than where we sit today. In one scenario, the HBL calculation said that by 2044, Lakewood's population would be 88,758. And then the other alternate calculation, it was 80,488. However, at the same time, the HBL did review the historical actual development growth that happened within Lakewood between 20, excuse me, 2020 and shown that within that 20-year period, there was a total growth of 3% or about 1/10 of 1% per year. There is a letter that was submitted to HBL in Pierce County earlier this year that the council, I believe, is familiar with. But essentially, the conclusion was to take a look at all of the various either ecological or geographic or land use type of restrictions on development within the city, some of which are unique to Lakewood. And the conclusion was that a little over half, or 52%, of Lakewood's land capacity is unavailable for future growth. And this chart here shows you what those different uses are. It's the limited use and density within the air corridor zones. The public institutions that are within the city actually use 10% of the city's acreage. The Fort In Lakes and open space land, including, for instance, the area around or in Fort Stilicon Park and then around Western State Hospital. All of that together again comes to 52% of the landmass in Lakewood. So this map shows you in dark colors those 52% of the acreage, where growth at this point is unrealistic to try to plan for. Based on the then-available information about Lakewood's population, that it was at 60,030. The city said, based on our historical growth rates and what we see happening on the ground right now, we see a realistic population of about 68,000 versus that 80,000 or 88,000 for the city by 2044. So that was presented to HBL and also Pierce County. Since then, there's been, or not since then, but what's been going on in the city is two sub-area plans being adopted. And within these two sub-areas, significant growth for both jobs and housing units is included. So downtown, almost 7,400 jobs and over 2250 housing units are planned for between now and 2035. And within Lakewood Station's sub-area, just adopted this year, the idea here is between now and 2035, there would be an additional almost 1,300 jobs and a little over 1,700 housing units. So adding those together, you get 8,645 jobs and either 3,436 housing units or 7,900-plus people. So if you were to go with the old number that the city understood its population to be right now, that would have covered 99% of the population the city thought it could absorb by the year 2044, just within those two sub-areas. However, the census is now available and the information within the census showed that Lakewood's population is actually a little higher than that at 63,612. So the math, I could provide it if needed, but long story short, looking at the total number of growth in population between 2010 and 2020 and also taking a look at the growth rate for that decade, coupled with the verified growth rate by HBL for a 20-year period of both of those showing about 10th of percent a year in growth. There would be two different ways to calculate an updated number of what the city's population could be by 2044. One would say if you continue to grow at the number of people per year that's been pretty constant in the last decade, you would end up at 76,692. The other is if you were to go by percentage, it would be a higher number because each percent would compound on top of the last, and you would end up at 78,873. Oops. So an updated recommendation would be that the city of Lakewood hold the position that its 2044 population should not be either the 80,000 or the 88,000 that HBL originally proposed, but go with that lower number of 76,692, which is 21% of the total population allocated to the core cities in Vision 2050. So Auburn, Puyallup, and U.P. would be asked to take the difference. And any remaining leftover, once all the core cities said they could take so many, would be then open for discussion among all of the jurisdictions as part of the conversation at the GMCC and the PCRC, sorry for alphabet soup. So, long story short, moving from a number of 68,000 by 2044, based on the census data that we've now received from the 2020 census, the new recommended number would be 76,692 by 2044 in the city of Lakewood. This again will be coming to those two groups in the month of September. The city manager, director, viewer, and myself met last week with council members Wayland and Farmer, who are the PCRC representatives for Lakewood. So they are up to speed on this issue as well when they go to the next PCRC meeting. But any other information, I'm happy to answer now or provide additional follow-up information, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, thank you for the report that provides a better understanding of both the purpose and the process. One thing that I was wondering, the 2044 seems to be a prominent date in your report, which is essentially a 22-year window looking forward. Is that new for this buildable lands report? Or is that kind of been the window that was used in 2014 and in 2008?
It has landed on 2044 because there's been a lot of back and forth with the state legislature in terms of timelines for when reports are due and horizons for planning. So, for instance, at one point, the buildable lands report was due in June. It's now due later this year, but of a larger consequence, at one point, the buildable lands reports were happening seven years apart. Now they're eight years apart. And the dates for the comprehensive plan update process, originally Lakewood would have had to do it in 2023 versus 2024. So the 2044 number comes now from a 20-year planning horizon for the city's GMA-required comprehensive plan update in the year 2024.
Okay, I understand, thank you. And then you referred to, on a rap, you referred to they were looking at pipeline parcels. And you sort of described them, the things that you couldn't build on now, but that might be able to be built on in the future.
Yeah, the land development process.
Examples of what those kind of parcels are?
That was simply to try to explain that sometimes and usually in land development of whether it's redeveloping, re-dividing, or taking a vacant large parcel and subdividing it, that process takes multiple years for any jurisdiction to review and approve. And then it takes additional time after that for building construction to start. So pipeline means that the permits and the review process is ongoing and it is moving along through the system, which again will take more than one year. And so you can anticipate they'll be popping out and available for development. They just aren't immediately.
So would that include, like, when we rezone some areas for commercial, industrial, that they're considered for a while pipeline properties like Woodbrook was until a certain time of when you got the sewers in and things like that? Is that essentially the concept?
Generally speaking, because if you have a parcel, for instance, that is five acres in size, the developer needs to bring infrastructure to it. The developer may need to subdivide it or actually consolidate additional lots to it, depending on the type of development they want to do. That, again, will take longer than the six months or so it takes to go vertical with a structure. So the development process is significantly longer. But at the same time, the permits are in the system, so you know what eventually will be coming out and become available for building. So it's something where it's been initially submitted, but they're not completely through the review process.
So in our R3 zone, we have actually quite a few parcels of two to five acres that have a house on them, a single residence. Is this process looking at those acres greedily as saying they're pipeline parcels that can have plenty houses?
That would not be considered a pipeline, per se. Pipeline means someone has actually submitted a permit application to move forward with a project. Going and looking at the available acreage within a particular zone where there's been no permit activity, that would be looking at the question of whether it's, quote, "underutilized" or not. And so the underutilized category that goes into the calculation to say, yes, there's enough housing and job capacity within the city, would look at R3 zoning throughout the city and just say, there's so much acres and so many units of housing. And given the density that's allowed there, five acres for a single-family house is underutilizing that property. That is different, again, from somebody having actually submitted a permit to the city to proceed with some type of development.
So is that five acres, when it is translated into the capacity column, count for one or count for 20?
They would account, they would count it for the maximum density available within that zone.
Right, so there's an expectation that it will, at some point in the future, be subdivided and built.
There is the assumption that that will happen because of market forces, not because the city is going to take any sort of action other than to make sure that things continue to be consistent with the GMA and those countywide planning policies and regional counting planning policies.
In the 2020 census data that came out, essentially, one of the fastest-growing communities in Pierce County was Bonnie Lake. In fact, it's significantly larger in population than all the others that are on that list of towns, okay, where they got a small piece to do that. Is there any potential for it to be reconsidered to be a core city? Or is it too far east with too little likelihood to develop the employment capacity to change categories?
It could change categories in the future when PSRC does another review of that, which I believe would be no sooner than five years and probably not for another 10 years. It depends on when they go back and look at Vision 2050 for updates. And it also is criteria, because a core city has to have a certain amount of population, a certain amount of acreage, I believe. And it also may or may not have a regional growth center. Part of the reason there's a lot of growth in Bonnie Lake is they did annex property as well between the 2010 and 2020 census.
So essentially, whatever Vision 2060 looks at comparing them to to us. And then I guess in terms of just preparing this update for us or in other discussions that you've had with trying to provide material to the PCRC, we as a council are going to be meeting here next month to discuss our legislative agenda and legislative policy manual. Were there any Growth Management Act legislative changes that the city should be advocating for that would work in our favor?
Rather than speak off the cuff there, I would Rather than speak off the cuff there, I would just work with the city manager and the, uh, director viewer to get that information to the council. That's all right.
I guess, uh, it, it, it's not so important tonight as, as to before we have our study session to discuss, uh, discuss that to see whether there is something we should consider trying to influence, uh, uh, the Growth Management Act future. But thank you, thank you, thank you for the report.
Any other questions for Ms. Spear?
Thank you.
Thanks Tiffany, did a good job dialing that down to make it a little more understandable. Back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Actually, she's got the next item as well, Mayor, on, uh, SSHAP.
Back to you.
And this will be brief, I promise. All right, so, um, toward the end of your packet this evening, there's a brief memo explaining what's going on with SHAPE or the South Town Housing Affordability Partners. Um, as the council is aware, Lakewood was the first jurisdiction to actually vote formally to, uh, enter into the interlo, intergovernmental agreement to join SHAPE. But since there you see under the discussion item, Auburn, Fife, Gig Harbor, Milton, Pierce County, the Puyallup Tribe, the city of Puyallup, Sumner and Tacoma have all since voted to do the same. And then this month you'll see Edgewood, Furcrest and University Place are all taking action as well. Several have specifically said they don't want to participate for now, which include Dupont, Ordigan, Stillicum. And then Buckley has not taken any action at all. Uh, but if you were to look at this geographically, um, which you'll see on the next page, we're now at the point of, um, eighty-eight percent of the geography of Pierce County or, uh, eight hundred and ten thousand plus out of the county's total nine hundred and seventeen thousand people are part of a jurisdiction that is part of SHAPE. So this map here, everything that's in green now is part of SHAPE per the IGA. Those that are in yellow have the scheduled votes coming this month. And then those that are in that pinky red are the ones that have said no as of now, which means that it may in the future change their mind. So where it now sits is that SHAPE is, um, switching its leadership and organization from an informal steering committee to a formal executive board. And the city of Lakewood is being asked as a member of SHAPE to identify its, uh, executive board member and also an alternate. And as you see here at the bottom of page one twenty-three, the formal member will be a mayor or a council member and then, um, or a city manager, excuse me. And. Oh dang. I'm sorry, I thought I put in there how alternates could get chosen as well. Long story short, you can have a, a mayor or council member be the member and then your city manager administrator can be an alternate. Um, and then basically once one is, once a member is named, they can designate someone to, um, participate on their behalf. And with that, um, just a quick update regarding the process of hiring the new executive manager for SHAPE. That process is ongoing. The round of interviews actually started this week and it'll continue next week. The intention is that by, um, uh, the end of October, they're going to be able to start saying this is the person and when their start date maybe will depend on who they hire. So with that, answer any questions or see if you're ready to take action on, uh, appointing a member. It's not, um, has, it does not have to be done tonight. It could be done on the twentieth of September, but it would be that last night, uh, to do it in a timely way. So either tonight or on the twentieth.
Any thoughts?
We're beyond the.
Yeah, we can chat about it then. The, uh, I think I, the unfortunate thing about this is it would probably be best handled by at a staff level, level with people like Ms. Spear as opposed to, uh, council, council members, mayors, political folks who have less technical expertise, especially when you get to the smaller jurisdictions that don't have excellent staff support or the depth to be able to work on it. So, uh, uh, it may be a frustrating assignment. So let's, why don't we put, there's no objection to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. All right. Probably not on consent agenda, yeah. So, that all Ms. Spear?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for staying up this late.
You too, thanks.
Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items, um, just to follow up on Ms. Spear's presentation regarding population. We did get from the U.S. Census Bureau, our estimated twenty twenty census population, and it's estimated to be sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve residents here in Lakewood, which is a nine-point-four percent increase over our twenty-ten census. For comparative purposes, Pierce County's population over that same period grew sixteen percent and the state population grew fourteen and a half, and a, and a half percent. As you look out to this week, just a couple of items on your calendar I wanted to bring to your attention. The first is on, um, uh, Thursday evening, um, DSHS will again host another, um, open house. This one will be a virtual town hall as it relates to the Western State Hospital Master Plan, and that'll be at six PM. And this one, unlike the one last week, will be via Zoom. And, uh, also, um, on Friday at twelve-thirty, um, we will have our annual nine-eleven remembrance ceremony right out here in, uh, the Public Plaza, again at, uh, twelve-thirty. Um, also wanted to just note to you that West Pierce Fire and Rescue is going to have, um, their own remembrance ceremony, and theirs is actually going to occur on Saturday morning at nine AM at their headquarters building in University Place. And, um, Lakewood representative, all of you folks are all, all invited. So if you have an opportunity to attend that, you're more than, you're more than welcome to. Um, also next week on September sixteenth, um, there's going to, Pierce County is going to have a first responders memorial dedication. That's going to be at ten AM and that's going to be out in front of the, um, county ci, city building in, in, in downtown Tacoma. And then of course, uh, on Saturday, September eighteenth, we will have our twenty-fifth anniversary of city incorporation, and that will be at the new Colonial Plaza. And, uh, that will kick off, um, at two PM and run through eight-thirty PM. However, there will be a five PM opportunity for this body and some other, um, distinguished speakers, um, to, uh, have a little bit of a ceremony. So need you there at least at five PM or four fifty-five. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, now move to council comments. Mr. Bulkey. Ms. Moss. Still with us? Mr. Bradstetter.
Well, she's, she's, she's dis, she's disconnected.
Mr. Bradstetter.
Ms. Mayor, uh, this past Saturday, I was able to join a group of residents that spent some time emptying trash out of the creek bed, uh, creek that was sponsored by the, uh, of Clover Chambers Watershed Council, um, and, uh, uh, Mr. Ott from the city was, was helpful in coordinating what to do with the trash after it was gotten out and they are, they're appreciative of that. They planned, uh, to do four more type of those on different reaches of the creek. Uh, the one that they did this past Saturday was, uh, at the fish ladders that were just, uh, to the, to the east of Gravel Lake Drive, uh, where there's, uh, things there that, interesting because I, I hadn't, I hadn't walked to that section of the creek before, so, but it was definitely dry. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
I wanted to make note of the fact that the Pierce County Council is meeting tomorrow night, just up the street at the University Place City Hall, and that's at six PM. This is one of those rare times that the council meets in the wild, outside of the county city building and outside of business hours. So I, um, encourage you to either attend in person or to watch it online. That's it for me.
Mr. Wayland.
Well, thank you. Uh, a bunch of stuff coming up this week in terms of meetings. I've got a community engagement leadership team meeting with members of the Clover Park School District and other community members on Wednesday evening. I'll fill you in after that. I do hope to attend the Western State, uh, Master Plan Town Hall Meeting. I believe it's still set for this Thursday at six PM. And then on Friday, there is a nine-eleven remembrance ceremony. I will try to make that here at City Hall around noon. Then my only, only other comment is, or twelve-thirty, right. Only other comment is the, you know, the meeting tonight was probably not one of our finer moments. And I think it, to me, reflects the need for some additional opportunities for dialogue with members of the community. And, you know, we've talked, a few of us have talked at some length about possibilities of doing maybe threesomes at mini town halls where it's very informal, opportunities for give and take communication on maybe a topic of interest, kind of like maybe an Uber coffee with the mayor that is less formal, perhaps, uh, geographically rotating around areas of the city. And I throw out there for consideration, you know, I've been doing this gig now for twelve years and it seems as if we could have a little looser leash with one another to go out and do more community engagement. And I would advocate out of the thirteen million dollars we've got for ARPA funds that we allocate to the city council budget, a thousand for each council member for discretionary use at facilitating better community town hall meetings, whether it's used for pizza, for members of the local neighborhood to attend, or something that gets us better engaged with members of the community. So it's more of a we as opposed to us, they. Needs to be a we, we to have a win-win, for lack of alliteration. So, uh, that's my thought until a very late hour. But I, I think, I think there's some opportunities to diffuse some tensions with better intentional communication. That's it.
Irrespective of the merit of the idea, I don't know that ARPA is eligible. So that's eligible for ARPA. So we have, we'd have to check on them. I just note that on, uh, Friday, uh, city manager and Bill Adamson from SSMCP and I had the opportunity to meet at length with Colonel Phil Lamb, Garrison Commander at JB and Lamb. And they have two overriding concerns, which are concerns that we share and that are shared nationally by, uh, armed services from my, uh, fairly recent meeting at the Association of Defense Communities, and that is childcare and affordable housing. Nationally, uh, the, uh, the issue of affordable housing can only be addressed from the military's aspect in the short term by pouring money on top of, of the basic allowance for quarters. Uh, they, they aren't going to be able to build their way out of it in the next few years. He indicated that their survey showed that they were, uh, over five hundred slots short on childcare. Remember that seventy-four percent of the people live off base? That's where they want the childcare there. They have many facilities on base, but they also have lots of young families. So, uh, that exacerbates our problem that with the shortage of childcare in the community and the shortage of affordable housing. One thing we may want to consider, uh, is, uh, an idea that, uh, came up at the ADC, had been tried without success at Fort Drum, but that was a unique circumstance, and that was, uh, a public-private partnership, building housing on federal property that is not part of the military housing system, but where private developers are incentivized, uh, to, uh, provide for that housing and. No, they have, they have the privatized housing on base, but this is, this would be market. There would be, there would be incentives to rent to the military, but it would be open to the general population. So isn't exclusively military housing. It's just something that maybe consider what they have potentially to add to that is, is land. Uh, and we're adjoining some of those areas, so we may end up being a service provider because it would have to be a civilian area. So it's, it's just a concept at Fort Drum in upstate New York. They did a big project like that with the promise that they were going to prove a brigade or two in, and then Congress changed his mind and, and, uh, they started, they ended up with a ghost town. So it does have some drawbacks. Just a thought. But the meeting, the meeting went well. I think we're, uh, going to be engaged by, uh, a garrison in a positive manner. And he also indicated that, uh, General Brunson, now, I think he's still acting until he gets his third star, uh, First Corps Commander, uh, is interested in reinvigorating the community connector. Not that ours needs it, but it seems to have languished during COVID in many, uh, of the instances. That's all I had. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager? Thank you for adjourned.